Right, 403 according to my computer. I see it's recording, so let's start. April 27th, 2020, GBO S special meeting regarding 2019 budget review. Announcements. Blick is encouraged to ask questions and provide comments, please raise your hand via Zoom. And wait to be acknowledged. GBS seat E is open for appointment, interested candidate should send a cover letter and resume to GBS via email. As listed in the meeting packet and agenda. GBS 2021 nonprofit recreation grant applications are available May the first to June the 19th. Applications will be available online. Web page. Well, call Mike Edgington, co-chair and land use supervisor.
Jerry Fox, co-chair and public safety supervisor.
Erin Boone, fire department supervisor.
Okay. Any disclosures?
I don't think so, not for me.
Okay, let's move on to the agenda, any revisions to the agenda, anybody wants? If not, I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda, sorry Erin.
No, none for me, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Okay, I think by consent unless I hear any objections. Okay, on to business, number one, discuss and assign parks and rec role to one of the supervisors. I will start and say, I think Rhodes probably has a bunch of work to do in land use, we're still having meetings, so. I don't know if police, I think P S A C is now once a quarter.
Right.
And fire department is probably the same about once a quarter. So I would happily assign it to one of you two.
Um. What's going on with Rhodes?
I think it's just the, there's nothing specific, it's just the general approval and the. And I think there's still some complaints and concerns about roads which go to the supervisor right here. Kyle can probably say more.
Well, I'll, I'll say something, you know, this next year, you know, as when we get into roles, we're gonna have a new contract, so there will be. Right, Kyle?
We're gonna, we're actually gonna try to bid that this summer, so that we have a contractor established before winter hits.
But on our current schedule, we're going to have someone else probably in seat, in CT by June.
Correct.
So assuming we get applicants, and I think we will get applicants, we may already have applicants, I don't know. Have you received anyone, anything yet, Kyle?
We haven't heard anything yet, no.
Okay, I think we will do, I've heard at least two people are interested.
Um.
So we're really only talking about the next two months?
Yeah, and really, I mean. There aren't a lot of meetings going on as far as parks and rec.
No.
Are trails, trails decided not to meet at all?
Yeah, they have, yep, we presented to the last one and they only want to meet if it's critical.
Okay.
Let me ask this question, you know, I don't, I don't think Erin or I mind probably doing it. But does it lead us into then having to do it, be a parks and recs person for all next year?
You're the two most senior people on the board, so if you want to, you can, but you're not. You're not gonna end up doing it unless you want to do it. We reappoint.
Erin, I'll do it, you're working. You're working.
Okay.
Carol always laughs when I get assigned all this stuff.
You just.
Since you're retired.
Yeah. Retired, not. Retired, tired.
I just mean tired again, it's retired. So with that overwhelming enthusiasm. There he is, also taking on parks and rec, the parks and rec role until we reassign roles when the new supervisor is appointed. Excellent.
Sounds good, thanks.
Thank you very much, Jerry, appreciate it.
Yep.
Number two, review of budget areas for GBS from 2019, I'll hand this over to Kyle.
Sure. Okay, I'm gonna share a file here.
Hi, Michelle.
All right, can you guys all see that?
Yep.
Okay, so starting with order of the agenda, we'll go with fire first. And so this is what we see from our side with how the payments are given to the contract. And so this is Excel drawout from SAP. And gives you an idea where we go, so. As you can see, we started the year with the first sign is the original budget. And then as we made changes through the year, you can see what happened over there. With it, so the two main expenses with this contract. That are within the service areas control really, one is, is the contract itself, which was 793,000. Due to storage last year, we had to use some of the money left over from the repair and supply maintenance. Which was all approved by you. In, in, I think December. And so it made the total contract cost issue 829,000 there. In that area. And so with moving those monies around. We ended up with 854,000 in actuals, so. I haven't had a chance to look into this and ask, but for some reason we were 25,000 over there compared to what we actually had available in the budget. There, so I don't know with that, sometimes this can be accounting magic that explains that. But that's, that's what it shows there in that aspect, oh, I know why, excuse me, it's because of the contract service line, so overall, we're 858,000. In that area and. And so 99% of that budget was spent, so I'm getting it now, sorry.
Well, let's go back, the, what we approved. For the contract cost was 829,000. Plus 30,000. For the maintenance. And essentially came in exactly about the same as that number. They had to use the maintenance cut to. Or offset the overrun on the contract labor.
Correct, and, and a portion of the 406 contribution. Was supposed to go to that too, so.
Is that the 36,000?
That would have been the 36,000 there.
Right.
Yep, 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 in our, in your budgets, you approved, actually moving of 25,000 from the. Repair fund and then 35,000 from the 406 contribution towards it there. And in within that, the, in 2020, we're, we're supposed to figure out how that contribution was going to be reimbursed from the revenues. That were collected in 2019.
Right, and then I asked, I asked AFD to on Friday if they had got that ready for us to be able to encumber and they haven't got back to me yet.
So. That is the non-labor contract and contribution costs along those lines, before I move down, is there any questions there?
Yes, that contribution to other funds line.
Yes.
I don't understand what that, I'm, I don't understand what that means, it went from 74 to 278.
That's the normally the, the contribution to the 406.
Right, which was 74, but then it jumped up to 278, that's the bit that doesn't make sense.
Do you know, Michelle, is that money that came in from services that you're waiting for revenue on?
No, it shouldn't be 204, that would be awfully high. No, I don't.
We actually reduced that.
I don't know what that number is.
Yes.
But 204 sounds almost like our EMS, area wide EMS.
Yes.
Right, it's very close to the 209 number.
Or is that the two, is that the 240 in direct cost modified accrual?
I don't know, that's a, that's a question I'll ask.
Yeah, because right now it's showing that there was 278,000 put into that 406 account.
Which, there was supposed to be only 74,000.
Right. So there shouldn't be, there shouldn't be a giant contribution like that.
Yeah, yeah, so I guess.
I'm complaining though, that looks lovely.
Be complaining if you spend it and then have to return it.
So I think that's the question, we'll have to figure out what that line means, what's going on there with that accounting.
So I think at the end of it where it says 100% utilized.
That means it was moved somewhere.
I know, so maybe this meant, maybe the 204 was the number of 406 money that we encumbered, like for the air packs. And for the.
Oh, yes, that's a good point, yep, that would make sense because they would have moved it into your operating budget to pay for it.
Oh, yep.
So that's probably the air blocks right there.
Yeah, that's air packs and, and compressor.
You know, I don't have it open right now, but what I'll do is I'll go look at it, because I can click on these individually and it tells me what, what was paid out with those, so.
Yeah, that looks, that looks almost the amount, so that's, that's definitely what that is.
Yeah, okay, I'll confirm that, but I think that air packs could catch.
That would make sense because that, because you would, you're taking more out than you put in.
Yes.
Yeah.
So I'm confused as to where the reduction in 406 money. Is reflected in this.
That's a good point.
Yeah, I think, I think the fact that, that there was, it was supposed to be a contribution of that and then the actuals was everything. That was taken out, the 74,000, or well, that's a good point, yeah, I don't know.
Let me play with that, I'll see if I can. Let me see here, just trying to get to my homepage. Because I might be able to. Log into SAP. Unfortunately, I'm on my, I'm on my. I'm on my laptop, I don't have the SAP login, so I'll look at that, because what they might have done is just paid, instead of paying the contribution. To. To them. Or, or moving the contribution up into the non-labor, they might have just paid it directly out of that contribution line to the fire department. And so it, with, within that 74,000, 36,000 of that would have been paid directly to.
Right, that's that number above.
Yeah, and then. Yeah, I don't know why it didn't show, but you know.
So, so it's showing as the adjustment in budget.
Yes. Yep, so I'll find out what happened there.
So we're expecting to get reimbursed the 36,000, is that right?
Yes. And. So, and so I asked them about it on Friday, so there should be, we should have, so I know of 36,000, but then there also should be some out of area billing. For like when we went on giant bonfires in Byrd. And then it'd be a couple other, like false alarm billing. So for false alarms in Gerwood, which really primarily, primarily is one. Commercial building owner. And so there should be some of that money coming in, but they haven't, what I asked for is could you give me the breakdown, they're supposed to be sending it to me before they send it out, but they haven't. So the city of Whittier just got a bill for 76,000, 77,600, but we don't know what it's for, so. Trying to get back information, AFD kind of, they're working, they're not, they're all kind of working remotely, some of them, and it's hard to get financial information at the moment because they're focused on COVID.
Okay.
But I have lots of questions into them, so.
And just. Contract services. So, just to go back, I have my 2019 budget in front of me and. It looks like we approved 867,121. And so. I'm, yeah, I don't know how that works. It's weird.
What was, you said, you said you have a number of what?
There was 867,121. That we approved for contract services and the 30,000 for supplies.
Right, which case is the 897,121. Contract cost modified accrual.
Well, exactly, on line 14, that's.
On line 14, yes.
Yeah, that's what we approved.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, well, it's a little confusing.
Well, and the IGCs looked like they were over two a little bit.
Yeah, the IGCs are about 10,000, don't they?
Yeah, and I asked, I asked Chief Hetrick about that. In lieu, you know, ahead of this meeting, and she, I said, are they going to be the same, are they going to change by 10,000 this next year, and she said, no, they're going to be the same, it's not going to change, so. Anyway, that's what I was told.
So, I don't know if this is the right time to talk about it, but. For this year. You know, the idea was that we would have this contract talks and we would get a bigger number and that would help your budget. So since that isn't happening, how are you doing?
Um, I'm waiting to get my last this month. I, we, we're not having any calls, right? So we're having very few calls and we're doing tele firefighting where you call 911 and then we call you and FaceTime with you and say, is it, is it really an alarm chirping, show me, it's FaceTime, so. It's kind of weird. So I, I should be able to tell you within a week where we are right now. I don't know where, I don't have the exact number where we are, part of what we're doing is we're pushing basically all of mansion my costs to, and the safety officers' costs to the COVID, to COVID, so we're trying to get. One or two months of salary and everything pushed to that, which I think should make our budget look pretty good. We're still having the. We're still having training nights, we're doing it telephonically and then bringing a whole bunch of people or video conferencing, and then we're bringing. Small groups in within the mandated limit to practice putting on all the COVID PPE. So we're still having those costs, so those aren't changing, but what is like drastically down is the run volume, although in the last day, that's picked up again, so. The last two days has been pretty busy, so we're, so we're back to like two calls a day. Or, you know, more, so I can only see that it's going to pick up, but we did have like a month and a half of no calls or few calls. Where it would have normally been our busiest time, so I think that's going to be a good cost savings for us. And then especially if we can push those two months of, of a lot of wages to COVID, I think it might be all okay, at least, that's my, that's my positive thinking, so.
Fewer out of state drivers on the Seward this summer as well.
I think there's going to be tons of drivers on the Seward though, right?
Fewer out of state drivers.
Oh, yeah, fewer out of state drivers, but the same amount of Gerwood drive, you know.
More, yeah.
Or more, yeah. So, and then I asked Chief Hetrick a bunch of questions about, you know, were they gonna, were the, is there the mayor thinking of a tax break that would cause us to have less revenue, less money available? For a fire service area next year, and she said, no, I asked her, what are we going to do, because obviously area wide EMS revenues are down and part of that's credited back to area wide EMS to supplement the. The money, the taxpayer money, and she said, no, it's not going to matter, it's going to be fine, and plus there's some COVID relief money. That's the magical federal government money. So, when I, when I was expressing concern about budgeting and everything last week, because I was very concerned. Basically, I've been told everything is going to be okay, so. That's what I've been told.
And contract negotiations are still on hold and.
They are, I mean, we're kind of in a glide path right now, so it wouldn't be necessarily bad to start them up again. AFD's had a bunch of personnel changes. But it wouldn't be bad to start them up again, they're not, they're now anticipating that our next highest busiest week is going to be that third week of May. They figure we'll have a lot more COVID patients then because it would have been, you know, two weeks since everybody's gone out and talked to each other. And so right before long weekend is where they're expecting us to be, get super busy again. So, don't, it seems like there might be an opportunity to start negotiations again. We're definitely not doing the 16 hour days like we were doing there for a month and a half, for six weeks, so we're kind of, we're back to, this is the first second, I would say the second week that we're scaling back to more of a 40 hour. Or, you know, 50 or 60 hour, whatever we work normally, operation, so for command staff.
Thanks.
And Michelle, the next step was for, for us to meet with the board, right, to talk about numbers?
Yes, and then three of the board were leaving, I think now two of the board are leaving, and I'm not sure. If they, I know they had put it out for additional board members because they had no luck getting board members, so I think that's also sort of swirling around too.
Hmm, okay. All right. I have to go, there's something beeping at me, I'll still be within ear range, but I'll just be gone a second.
You can FaceTime if it's a fire alarm.
You can, that's how we do it.
I had mine going off after the power cut yesterday, I had mine going off and when I checked it, I realized I put one of the batteries in backwards, there was no battery backup on it. All those years at university doing electrical electronic engineering and I can't put batteries incorrectly.
But you get a free pass once.
That's my one, yeah, I am admitting it.
That's why the power went out, they wanted to show you that.
That's right.
So. Any more questions with this budget, just to wrap up, we ended up with this budget and because of IGCs, we're 10,000 over on this one, so. But as we go through the next ones, we'll, we make up that for the overall for, for the budget.
So this doesn't show any income because nothing was charged last year?
Because they hadn't set it up yet.
Right, okay, I'm just wondering in future where would we see the income?
That's the problem. Oh.
Go ahead.
That's the problem we've seen with SAP is they don't show the income levels on the operating budgets.
Okay.
I've had the same question and, and like Michelle, I haven't got a direct response on it yet, so I will.
But on this, we wouldn't accept, we wouldn't expect to see an income on last years because it hadn't been set up.
Yeah, but, but we should, like on old PeopleSoft, we used to be able to show the revenue, right, so you could act, you could actually see if your revenues were trending, what you said you were budgeting for your revenue, so you could actually see it. So it's weird that they can't show it, it makes no sense that they can't show it.
Yeah, the SAP version doesn't show it, and I think I have to go look somewhere else, I gotta figure out how to find that now, so. This, the whole SAP thing is not intuitive at all, so.
It's prettier.
Well, yep, when it gets a report. But when you're in it, it's just like, I swear it's the Germans getting back at us, so. The German software, so.
Kyle, we feel your pain, Jerry and I have used that in our past careers.
Yeah, somebody's a good salesman on this whole thing, self systems, so.
Yeah.
All right, any more questions with fire? No, okay, we'll move over to police.
Okay, I'll get off now then.
All right, thanks, Michelle.
Thanks.
This one should be easier.
Yes, this one's straightforward, but still clunky, because they, the way they align the numbers, like for example, other professional services. It's the number I got from them and then they put it down, so when we make payments, they make it out of contracted services, so it, it, it's just not clean to me, I don't like it that way anyways, the way.
Right.
So, so with non-labor contract expenses and other miscellaneous costs is, we came in $2,600 under budget with this one. It's mostly because we didn't use up the full 5,000 miscellaneous, because we had towing free for a good part of the year last year. And we used that and then we just didn't. Have any other purchases that we thought we would possibly in that area. One of the biggest purchases that we did have under that contact, that line was that we rented those signs for two weeks during fire season. And it came out of this budget, those portable signs that said fire danger, those were about a thousand bucks a week, so. So that, that worked out there. For those, but yep, pretty straightforward with this budget, there are some small IGCs with this that we pay mostly for purchasing. But, yep, there's this, there's that, so. One thing that we, I need to work on this right now to make sure it happens, or just confirm that it's happening, is that we are right now going to be getting a reduced rental rate from ACS. Because we've paid off our improvements over there for the last three years. That contract started in April of the first year of the contract, and so we should see that going down by half. Going into this year.
So are the, so the rental costs are they coming, are they being charged to communications?
Yeah, so that's, that's the funny thing about it was that they thought, because when ACS bills for it, they bill on the same format as your ACS telephone. Bill, and so I had to explain it to the ladies in Anchorage that it's actually not an ACS bill, it's a, it's a rental, and they said, okay, we'll just leave it where it is for now, and you know that, and we'll go forward with that.
So I'm unclear where these, where the sign rental is then.
Oh, the sign rental, it's down, it's, what happened is, is that they didn't, they made a contracted services other.
Right.
And so the sign rentals came out of that 5,000, which, which then, instead of paying the, when they made the payments, instead of doing other professional services where they originally signed it, they were making the payments down there and then the sign rentals. Were, were coming out above, and so there's only 515 here, so I think they might have crossed that up a little bit with the 870, 870 in there.
Okay, right.
So.
Maybe it was charged in two different places at different times.
Yeah, it depends, because sometimes there's two accountants doing this and then they assign it to different spots, so.
Net, net, we paid about half of. We paid about half of our expected amount for other services plus the full cost of rental and professional and the contract itself.
Correct, correct, so we ended up with a surplus of $27,000 there, it's actually $2,700 there, and so we used 99% of the budget in that aspect.
Right.
This one's one of the simplest budgets we have. Good, any questions with police? All right, I'll move on to roads, streets. Okay, so this right here is streets, the first portion I'll talk about is the labor, so this is expenses for both Margaret and I for the year. Some of the calculations they made for like accrual, like the annual leave taken or accrual modifications. Were a little bit over, but the biggest one over was the, and that works itself out as you can see up above, because when we use, when we, we take leave, they charge it to this line, they charge it to the leave line, and then the straight labor doesn't get charged.
Right.
But then the biggest over was the medical, and so they seem to have that calculation wrong when they estimated it, we're 16,000 over on the medical. And dental benefits, so. I haven't actually compared that yet to see if they corrected that for this year, but it's always something to keep aware of if they're, if they're shooting low, because I think our medical costs are pretty much the similar, similar if not more this year, so. So we'll see, see what they've done there, that, those are all calculated by human resources and payroll together and they usually, we have no control with those numbers.
It's a little high even for Alaska.
It seems like two of us, I guess, I don't know, you know.
Yeah, I mean, you're talking.
Oh, that's for the pair of you, yes, of course, yeah, two full-time people, yeah, I was thinking of double what I'd expect, but yes, that's right. Two full time people. Yeah, I was thinking double what I'd expect, but yes, that's right. For two people, it would be.
And our families. So. So we're 11,000 over on non labor on labor expenses. And then as we get down in here, here's our non labor expenses in this middle section. And so what you see here, the first one is operating supplies, which is is basically things that I'll buy for operations that can be anywhere from a a whole super sack of of asphalt patch to road signs or cones and things like that. And so I try to keep that I actually purposely have that get put into the operating supply so I can understand what's going on there. But I'm using the their repair and maintenance supply budget line to help fund that. So you can see down there, we spent 38,000 of that line, but 16,000 plus or add 16,000 that goes towards that budget. It just gives me a sense that way when I it's easy for me to go back to that category and look at different costs on different items when I dig deep into that to find out what we paid for it that year instead of it getting into a very long sheet, which kind of gets overwhelming to look through. So.
So Kyle, do you when you purchase things, do you code it? Do you decide how it gets coded?
I do. Yeah. These are the things I purchase on my credit card. And then I I usually have some input with the accountants as to the way things will be coded if they're paying it for me by check. Or or money transfer or something like that, however they may do it there. But for the most part, I all the supplies that we get here that are under $2,500, I buy with the credit card, the P card, as we call it, the purchase card. So so I tend to do it that way. You can see our office supply expenses there. I don't know why this didn't get put in here, but we did have this accounted for in the budgets that we gave you. But the media multimedia resources, that was the bill that we paid to Glacier Gazette there, which, you know, made me think, when did Glacier Gazette go out of business?
Last November.
Yeah, they stopped publishing about November time.
Yeah, because we did pay for a full year of advertising. So I don't know. I'll follow that up, but you know, so and there's expenses like fuel and things like that. So you can see there that they actually split the fuel between two areas, gasoline issues and fuel expenses there. And that could be me too. Actually, we have codes within our accounting system and I might just chose the wrong code number, but they they relate to each other in that aspect. And then with also with repair and maintenance supplies, we will buy like calcium chloride, recycled asphalt out of that budget and use that there in that aspect. This year I had to do something for 5,000 bucks, and I don't have that in front of me right now, but it was environmental services. And that might have been a survey or some soil testing that we had to have completed as part of our DEC permit. So that that expense is there in that aspect. One thing that they did wrong this year is that they and this was Jessica, she was new accountant for us. She was charging our lawn mowing services to our road street account. And and once we got started with it, I told her just to stay there because the journal entries to reassign it was difficult. So I just said, just stay there. I'll watch the budget and and we'll we'll be all right with it. But she thought that related to roads.
That's the 6883.
That's the 6883. In that area. So and then other professional services, we had a lot of survey work done this year because of our fish drainages and things along those lines. And then some and then some property line disputes with right away. So those got charged to that line in that aspect. So. Oh, here's the yep. So there's the 2,000 that was encumbered for advertising, then they got charged as multimedia resources. So up there. And then communication, that's what we pay for our conference lines and some of the the phone connections we have. We still carry a 783 number because people we use that for conference line and then people will call us on the 783, the old timers. So we just we hang on to it so they can get ahold of us. And then we have a computer license and then some rentals. We had to rent some equipment last year to supplement the contractor because in the end it was cheaper for us to rent it versus having the contractor provide it. And so that worked out well that that mostly had to do with fish culverts. We had to get a special excavator to help with that project that wasn't in our specs. And then fleet equipment rental, that is me, that's the truck that we use. And last year I bumped up the truck rental and added two more just because we had the SCA interns and then we had our our seasonal worker. And we wanted to issue them to have a dedicated truck for their work. And so that's why there's more expense there in that area.
This is the line I'm interested in. Discounts lost.
Yeah, that is a good question. I just saw that there and I'm going to follow up on that one to find out what that was. Because sometimes that is a accounting thing that may not directly relate to us, but it gets put in here. And and so, well, it does relate to us in a way, but sometimes it doesn't go against actually our non labor operating budget. And so with with SAP, you can enter a code when you enter the open account and like what we have is called FC underscore mod. And it sometimes pulls these things out and accounting is using that for certain reasons, but it doesn't actually go against our labor, our non labor expenses. So and in this case, I might have I might have pulled the budget up and not put that FC mode in to distract to extract these type of charges here. So I'll find out what that is. And then the big expense with this contract is what we pay to the contractor. And so last year, we only paid them 512,000. We had a savings there of 87,000. That mostly had to do with the light winter we had to begin with in the fall and early winter. You know, it was quite wet and warm all the way up until New Year's Eve. And so we didn't work as much. And then we lost Bert and Jennifer, which were I would have kept them busy doing projects, but since they left, I didn't really feel in the mood to bring somebody in when there was not essential work that needed to be completed. So and I knew we had some expenses in other areas, so I didn't want to use up that contract money. And plus, I always keep a reserve of about 125,000 for those months from October through December, just to make sure we have enough coverage there. So so we ended up with a bit of surplus there. And then our utilities went over this year, which is unique because we haven't had that before. So I'm going to investigate that more to find out what happened with our public utility services. That'd be the heat for the garage over here and then what we pay for down there to keep the equipment warm, plugged in, things along those lines. So I'll look more into that. But that was the first time it went up on us. And then so overall, we had a contribution down here. As you can see, we made the contribution to the roads account. So that was moved, that money was moved. But for our non labor, we were we had 63,000 left over there. And then we had expenses down here. And then we had 51,000 for direct costs modified accrual. So I don't know what that directly meant in that scenario, but in the end, we ended up with 51,000 there. And then for a total for a final balance of 49,000 surplus for the year for the street budget. The one thing I'll look at in IGCs down here was that this is the first year that we got an IGC charge from HLB for the rental of our maintenance lot down there. I'm not a big fan of that fee because I don't feel like we're getting services in return, you know, in that aspect. We we put all the expenses into that lot and tried to figure it out. So so I've been a little bit more tart with them on giving us better support down there. Like one, as landlords, can you be more proactive to help us bring power to our lot? Because right now we work off a remote terminal. And so the equipment isn't parked on the lot in the winter and it just gets kind of messy and congested down there. And so I've been pressuring them in that aspect. I kind of feel that HLB right now is in the it's in a lame duck session and they're just sort of getting through and getting projects done. I think they're focusing on their priorities and, you know, there's going to be a leadership change there within a year. And so and then COVID has just been a big mess. So so we just keep pushing away there and trying to get things done so that we I feel like we're getting value, even though $2,600 is not big in the scheme of things, I still feel like $2,600 $2,600 of services should be provided at least for 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 property that's owned by the by the taxpayers in general. So.
So just jumping back to the that line, direct cost modified accrual. I mean, that 51 and a half thousand is just the difference between we made 63 effectively on the contract, but then paid an extra 11 for healthcare. So that's just the difference.
Yep, that's right.
That's the effective balance.
Yep, that's the effective balance. So 51,000 was the effective balance before we got.
Yeah, and then IGCs. So we didn't allow for the I don't think we budgeted for the for the rental last year, did we?
No, we didn't budget for the rental last year. The IGCs went over.
Yeah.
We're budgeting for this year.
Yeah, so that will make sense.
Yeah.
So any other questions from anybody?
No.
Which rental are we budgeted for now?
The IGC from HLB.
Rental of this spot down by the industrial park.
Yeah. This it seems like a bigger surplus than we usually have, isn't it?
It is. Well, it's about within pace. I think, you know, we're usually I always have a little bit larger surplus with the roads budget because we just have had light winters in the fall. You know, for as long as I've been here and it was I had a laugh to myself because we basically got to finish up the budget year and then we started a new budget year with the snowstorm and charged it against 2019.
Yeah.
So so but yeah, it I mean, it's a larger surplus. It's it's nice to have and then it'll land into our our undesigned account now. So it also makes up. So if you think about fire budget, that's that, you know, we're down to 38,000 with this because this is also balancing out fire.
We had that lovely storm on New Year's Eve, late New Year's Eve, just a few years before, a few hours before 2020 started. But that was not indicative of how the year was going to go, unfortunately.
No, it wasn't. And, you know, we actually spent all day sanding on New Year's Eve to have it all covered up in about an hour.
Yeah, it was unexpected.
Okay, I'll switch over to Parks and Rec. There's any unless there's any more questions here with roads. Keep you guys moving. Okay, so here is Parks and Rec and let's see. Okay, so the first section is our labor. We went over on labor and then I made that decision. We had a great employee last summer and he was doing great work and I decided to keep him basically probably about another month essentially. And and so he worked out really well for us and and I knew I had some room within the budget to do it. So we got our money's worth for that. So that's a the cost that were for straight time last year. The other aspect about it is that we hire this person at part time status because it is easier for us to work with HR to get that approved. And and then we usually give them about 10 more hours a week. So part time status is 20 hours and we usually give them 30 hours a week. So part of that cost is the extra time each week compared to what the budget is. So so if the employee is mediocre, I probably just keep them at 20 hours a week, but when they're good and I can trust them and I know they can work on their own, then I I bump them up to 30. So. Uh, operating supplies, we are definitely under budget for operating supplies. So once again, this could be chain for the swing set, you know, netting for for the volleyball court, whatever little supplies, rope for the hand tram. It all gets assigned to the operating supplies there, mostly our daily nuts and bolts that we need in that aspect. And then fuel, you can see the fuel expenses down here. Oh, publications, that is what we would pay to the mile post to advertise our campground here, the walk in tent campground. And then descriptions, we buy, we pay a subscription each year to American Trails or something because we have to we we apply for a grant. So we have to become a member and apply for the grant. We haven't got the grants. We're not applying anymore. And then fuel, fuel was was pretty under this year, that year, just because I think we had snow machine trouble this year and we didn't have a long winter. And so that mostly our fuel costs are associated with snow machine and then supplying our equipment. So that'd be like chainsaws, weed whackers. Those don't take a lot of fuel in the big, big picture of it. So. And then we had some, we bought some uniforms last year, which means we bought some T shirts for us that have our logos on it. And we bought some gravel wrap for the parking lots here at the playground. So here you can kind of see the expenses with repair and supply that didn't get used. That's because it got assigned to well, further down here, it got assigned to ground maintenance. What happened was is that we hired a local arborist, Josh Meister, and he did a bunch of work for us on our trees in town square. And we did also all the fertilization and thatching and liming of the soccer field, which the soccer field has really taken off with in in and then this year and this year's budget, I included those expenses for him in 2020. Last year, we didn't have that, but after discussions with them, we decided to move forward with having him do that. So we'll continue to work on that going forward. Other professional services. I'm not quite sure what this is, but it was $5,400 and it might have been somebody we hired for that just was a contractor and ended up in that area. So.
Is the sorry, is the what do you call it invasive species work done under this somewhere?
Yeah, I think that's actually done under the ground maintenance services. So so, you know, these could easily, I wish I had SAP on right now as I click into them, but between these two lines here, ground maintenance services and other professional services, that's probably invasive weeds and Josh Meister's expenses that we had there. And then just as a reminder, the lawn mowing services were getting put into the street maintenance because they thought it was associated with streets.
What's environmental services then? I assume that was weeds.
Environmental services.
Two up, 8,000.
I need to look into that just to clarify that. So what that was.
Is there where does the?
Weeds contract is only $5,000. So.
So that's the other professional services.
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
What about the cleaning of the building there?
That's a part of the library.
Oh, okay.
Don't pay for that. So the library covers all that through area wide taxes. And then donations to nonprofits, everybody got their paperwork done, everybody got paid out. So so that happened there. And then we didn't use our advertising budget this year out of parks. Sometimes we use it for different events, but we just didn't have anything that we advertised with this year. So. And then rentals, we had different rental equipment uses for parks this year. And so that was done. Oh, I went back up here. I think the environmental services was we had actually two emergency call out for tree removals. And so we had falls tree service and 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 tall trees come out and do some tree mitigation for us, especially leading up the forest where we found a cottonwood that was really dangerous. And so we had that removed. So some of those those fell either into other professional services or environmental services in those areas. So so we had some of that. And then contracted services here. And then contracted services here. This kind of got mixed between land improvements. And so we had forty five thousand set aside for that and this was going to be the S C A guys. We lost one S C A member halfway through the season. And then their estimate came in, actually ended up being much lower than their original estimate. I don't know why, but that's what they they built us. And and so the final bills were cheaper than what the estimate is to begin the season. So so that worked out and plus we had forty five thousand under that contracted services, which had a little extra room for materials for the trail build. But we were able to pay all that out with our our grants that we had for for the different projects we did last year. So we didn't have to actually tap any of our tax revenue money to pay for that. So.
So we actually just paid eighteen, rough, the sum of that twenty seven, twenty and fifteen thousand.
Yep. So we just paid, like you said, about eighteen.
Eighteen.
Seven, yes. Yeah. So it worked out nice for us in that area. So which which, you know, left left us with a non labor surplus of twenty one thousand. For some reason, I was concerned that we had some other expenses that were going to happen in the fall. And and so I got conservative and I only moved a hundred and fifty thou, a hundred and thirty thousand of the hundred and fifty thousand contribution to the other fund. Because I felt that we might go over budget with something, some some of our expenses. But in the end, we, I didn't need to do that. I could have just moved all the money. So we didn't move the full contribution. So that ended up leaving us there with the twenty one thousand and the twenty thousand from the contribution in that aspect. So and I think it also had to do with the labor too, because I wanted to keep the our seasonal on longer, David. And I wasn't sure how that was going to play out in the end. So so in the end, we had a a surplus of thirty eight thousand dollars for parks. And and then overall, we met all our I G Cs, our I G Cs were pretty on and we really actually had a surplus in I G Cs. So overall, we had a surplus of thirty nine thousand, three hundred and twelve dollars for for parks.
But half of that is a contribution we approved and hasn't been made.
Correct. So twenty thousand of that is, so yeah, so if you look at it, we only had nineteen thousand.
And that contribution went to the, is going to the Parks and Rec capital?
Yes, the hundred and thirty thousand went to the Parks and Rec capital fund. So it's.
Does that include the roof, the community building roof?
No, we didn't. We didn't make a direct, we didn't make a budget item to.
Okay, I can't remember.
This year.
And that twenty thousand, that just goes back in the general fund.
Yeah, it goes in the undesigned account.
Yeah.
Gerwood's general fund. So.
Yeah, we did approve it though. So I mean, we we asked for that to be moved.
Yes.
You believe. So it should, it should go into the right place.
Yes. We didn't, we didn't ask for the twenty thousand to be moved. We moved, we moved a hundred and thirty thousand.
I thought we, in our budget, we we recommended the one fifty.
In your budget for twenty nineteen?
Yeah.
Yes.
We, yeah, so we asked for one fifty to be moved and.
Yes, and I only moved, and I made a decision only move a hundred and thirty thousand because I was worried expenses.
But in retrospect, we should probably move that twenty thousand to where where intended it to be.
Yeah, and I think what we should do is we'll address that. We usually get our audit on our undesigned account in June. And so when we get that audit back, then at that point, you'll know how much is in there and then we can move that money.
Okay.
So this doesn't include revenues and so that's one thing I'll look into to find out where I can see where the revenues are. That's something I, when Michelle mentioned that, I was like, yeah, you know what? They don't show the revenue line on here like they used to with the old accounting software.
It's five thousand or so, isn't it for the?
Yeah, and I think we're pretty close. The, you know, we had some Margaret's been really good with the permitting, so we had every ten dollar rental adds up, you know, and the campground and 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 then weddings at, or the rehearsal dinners at the pavilion. And then, excuse me, Forest Fair came in, I think at thirty nine thousand, maybe forty one hundred. I don't have that in front of me, but it was, I remember it was one of the highest they have been had and since I've done the permitting. And I think that's just because they had such a good beer garden year.
Yeah, yeah. Well, the average is over two years now, doesn't it?
Yeah. So so let's look, that was, that was nice. You know, this year, we're just not going to have any revenue, unfortunately. And so we'll, we're going to have to pay attention to that. But we all also are not going to probably be doing things that we are budgeted for this year.
Right.
We're, I'm trying to work, I'm working through it right now on hiring. And that's quite a process that we're going through. It's just, yeah. So the city's working with me, but they're also doing things that they don't normally do. And one is rushing a hire. Usually it's a five month process. And so they're trying to, they're trying to make it work. So. They basically told me today, they said, if you know two people you want to hire, well, just hire them as temporaries. And I was like, wow, on the earth I hear that. And they're like, that's just the way it is right now. So so we're, we're, we're working through and we may try to find some people and then give them to H R to say, here's where we are. But but revenues in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty will be pretty minimal. Especially, I think it's revenue is Forest Fair. So.
Yeah.
So overall, you know, between all the budgets, we're looking at a surplus, you know, here thirty nine thousand, forty nine thousand, let's say eighty thousand lease. We're at eighty two, seven. And then with fire, we're back down to seventy two thousand. So we're looking at a surplus of seventy two thousand for the year with all the budgets combined. And that falls into our undesigned account and and when we get the audit, we should, we should see where we're at. So we should be well over four hundred thousand, I think, I'm estimating, and we'll probably be in the close to four fifty in our undesigned account.
Okay. Any other questions?
No.
No.
Good news.
Hey, thank you. Thank you, Kyle.
Yeah.
Thank you for struggling through that.
Oh, sorry. The other thing is, in all this, share these with you guys. Let's see here, where am I at? Stop share. Let's go back to share again. So we just, Margaret and I just produced reports for you guys on our projects that we completed, both for roads and for parks for twenty nineteen. And this gives a summary of all the different things. Reason up. Anyways, those are there so that at least you guys have talking points when you're in the community about what the dollars are used for and what we get done. And I think Margaret and I both take pride in the amount of work that we can produce with the relatively small budgets. When you look at comparisons to other communities, we get done. So so this just sort of gives you a summary of all the different things that have happened in the last year.
Yeah, well, looking through, I mean, impressive, looking through the long list of everything that got done. It's like, we talk about it every month, we hear the report from you, but seeing it all together is, that's nice. It's good to see. Good job.
Yep. And we post this online as a reference. So if you want to look at it, I think you can send them that direction.
I agree. Thank you.
Yep.
Um, okay, so I should, sorry.
I was just gonna make two comments. One comment is, so for roads for this next year and this next summer, now that you don't have Burton Jennifer, they're not coming back, are they?
No.
So do you feel comfortable with people you have to do the projects?
It's kind of wait, I I'm going to give them one project. I want to see how it goes. And so I don't even know who the crew is, honestly. I feel like, I feel like I have a bit of senioritis right now with this road contractor because he can't keep anybody around and trying to get things done. I mean, just for example, we're sweeping tomorrow and normally we have two sweepers. And I went to sweep last week when it was raining and he couldn't pull it together, stuff breaking down, everything's broken. You know, he's got, he's got a contracted water truck today, like the water truck is like the most simple piece of equipment we can possibly have. You just put water in it, you spray it out. And there were two water trucks were broken, you know, and so they had to contract out. So anyways, it's just this ongoing issues with the contractor and and not having a dedicated operator and mechanic here like we had with Burton Jennifer and then this winter we had with Mark. It it's just sort of makes me question how it's going to play out. So so anyways, we're gonna, we're gonna push through and try to, I have to do at least this fish culvert project because the culvert's failing so bad and a few others. They do have a decent operator who runs the grader. But the big thing will be is when we lay calcium and do the spring grading, I'll see how coordinated and how efficient they're going to be and what they're going to be like to work with. I know I have to get that work done. So so we'll see how it goes. And but there are a few projects that have to get completed this year.
Now, what's fish culvert?
I was about to ask that.
It's, so we did those, we did three over there at the, at the Day Lodge. And there's one more that crosses right underneath Aliaska Avenue, road right there and then goes down Loveland. So while that water goes down Loveland, we need to replace that one that's crossing right under there. So.
It's under Aliaska View.
It's right under the Aliaska View.
Got it.
Yeah.
And then one other thing, just, do you have any updated thoughts on going, what's the road, Alberg to the hotel?
Starting to lean more towards it. But I think one thing for you guys to digest is like, is that something that the service area, I mean, it's gonna, it's gonna suck up a lot of the road maintenance fund, road maintenance four oh six account. And maybe I'm just a little bit of doomsday on this, but I'm worried about revenue sources for Gerwood if if the mill, if the factory stays closed, closed all summer. And what I mean by that is we're, we're a factory town with with the resort. And if the resort really runs into hard times here, now that tourism's dried up and 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 on those things, I just wonder if other people are going to have hard times if Gerwood's going to have a tax revenue issue coming into twenty twenty one. And will we need to look at ways to give tax relief back to the taxpayers by moving money in different locations to help fund just our basic operations going forward? And so the timing right now is great. I mean, if we can afford it and we got the revenues in place and we can make it happen, this is the time to do it because there's going to be minimal traffic on Alberg this summer compared to normal years. But there's a reason why there's minimal traffic and the reason, and it concerns me that we could have, you know, people looking for relief and and we're minimal in in comparisons to what the school district charges. But, you know, the service area could do their part to help offset costs for people.
So when you say offset costs for people or less revenue, you're talking about the resort asking for a tax break?
Well, maybe. I don't know, you know, or people who are just not paying their taxes because they're going to foreclosure because they couldn't own this second, this expensive second home in Gerwood that they thought they could, you know? I don't know. That's, that's things I just think about us being prepared with a, with a reserve to do that. And we have other sources of reserve to help balance our budgets, you know? And if we need to, we could just slash the Parks and Rec budget down and have minimal Parks and Rec and keep through our primaries. But, you know, it'd be, it'd be a shame to lose the ground that we've, we've gained with with those services.
So the, the fish, fish passages were the other thing that we were talking about spending money on from Rhodes. What's the status of that?
Well, I think it's either or. If this passage, this project, it being close to six hundred thousand, if not more, you know, I think that's going to suck up a lot of our reserves.
So we're really take, we're taking advantage of the fact we have an extra hundred and twenty left over from the D O T, isn't it, the D O T work?
Yes, we're, well, we're taking, we're taking advantage of that state grant that's left over from the Alberg extension, which.
Yeah. So that can only be spent on Alberg.
Correct. So that's why we're focusing on.
So we're leveraging the twenty percent discount effectively that we have this year. And that can only be spent this year?
I would probably say yes, you know, I think in twenty twenty one, the state's going to go out and find all unspent revenue and pull it back. So no matter what your excuse is, they're going to take it back. So.
Yeah. So I think that's the argument of where is the opportunity cost.
Correct.
We have a, we have the opportunity to do this for twenty percent less than we normally would because of the state grant or because of state money.
Correct.
So I mean, I'm generally supportive of it. And as you said, this is still, I mean, the, I agree with what you're saying about the resort. But the, you know, they're, they're investing in the Nordic spa, they're they're making a commitment at least to the infrastructure on the hotel side. I don't know what their commitment is, they're mounted, but on the hotel side, they're making a commitment. So I see them as still being vested long term.
Yep.
I do think it is obviously going to be a difficult summer, but to some extent, like next, you know, next year maybe is where the pent up demand gets released. So.
Yes, true.
When you said it would be either or on the Earlberg versus fish passages, are those, those are different fish passages than the Aliaska View one?
Yeah. So these would be the Mount Hood, Lake Tahoe and Davos Fish Passages. Basically, the outlet of Glacier Creek or Aliaska Creek.
Okay.
We've had those, we've had those plans finished for a long time and we're looking at an estimate of about six to eight hundred thousand to complete those.
Okay.
But we, we tabled it because we had this hundred and twenty thousand left over from the Alberg extension and we're trying to use that money in one way was to repave Alberg.
Mm hmm.
Yeah.
I mean.
I think that's a good argument for that.
I, I think it's definitely worth, you know, using the money when we have it. When I think about Earlberg, there's like, there are some bad parts of it. I don't feel like the whole thing is bad. But I guess if you do it, you should do, do it all, huh?
Well, yeah, I agree. We've done sections and so we won't be doing the whole thing. The, the, we'll just be doing from the service road entrance, which I think is, they call it a pump house, back to the intersection of Aliaska Highway. And so the the section from when you start to seat a hotel down to Alberg, we've already replaced that section. And that's kind of, was kind of the prototype for what we want to do because we just, we grinded that section and then relayed all that asphalt as base material and then paved over it. And that section has done really great. You know, I think we're on the fourth winter now with it and it's cracked normally and and it's set up really nicely. So so, yeah, we would just be doing a section going back. The, I think the Alberg doesn't look that bad because we're constantly patching it. Where we go out there, we do cuts, we put a patch in and then we crack seal it and we do all kinds of things. So if we truly wanted to do a nice rebuild on it, we would get in there and dig it out and then replace material. But then we're looking at three times the cost of what we're trying to accomplish here. So in ten years, we may be looking at another repave. But we always will be unless we go in there. Because when they built that road, they did it as cheap as they could because they had so much expense into the hotel. And so they went in there, they laid a base. And what I heard is they did a lot of work in the rain and then they actually ran asphalt in the rain too. So.
So I would be in favor of kind of pushing forward with it. So, you know, whenever you think we need to like prove you going out to look for a bid, you know, like, is that the next board meeting?
Yeah, I was going to do it at the next board meeting. Yep.
It becomes whole business in next meeting.
Yep. Next meeting, we'll, we'll finalize the cost. We're working through a few things right now and and we'll finalize the the engineer estimate and then we'll take it out the bid.
And then if something happens before, I mean, you're thinking end of July into August to start, right?
Yeah, yep. And I need to check in with Larry Daniels because they were, you know, they were supposed to be digging right now and I haven't seen any action over there, but I know that they're still pushing forward on it. I haven't heard different from them. So.
They cleared a lot of trees.
Yeah, they cleared a lot of trees. They've got the land spec, you know, they may just be waiting things for things just to really dry out and then move forward. I think that was the main thing, but they, they, I think these are getting there.
Okay, we should move on to item three, which is review of G B O S nonprofit grant year end reports from last year.
Yeah, and I'm sorry, I missed attaching those reports, but I have just put them into a file.
I didn't know you were there. Hello.
She's been here.
We're practicing being socially distanced.
Let me get into it here.
So basically, you know, before we allow the grantee to apply for the next grant, we always do have this follow up year end report, which has a narrative and then also a financial element. Again, I apologize for not sending it to you guys with the rest of this packet. The person who's most interested that you all take a look at this is Lewis Leonard. He's always wondered what kind of follow up happened because, you know, they get asked for the report and they want to know how it gets reviewed.
Sorry, the server's giving me trouble. Yeah, I think that's what we'll do is we'll just get it to you. We can send it out today and then you guys can review the different packets and then we'll move it forward from there.
Okay.
And you said it's a report on the nonprofit grants, is that right?
Right.
Yep.
Just saying what they use their GBOS funding for so that you know what they did was what they told you they were going to do. And I think down with those particular grantees, there's, it's pretty obvious because you're all a part of all of those programs anyhow, one way or another. So anyway, we can make sure that you have those. And then you should just be aware that the next grant cycle opens day one after still getting everything back from the grantees for their contracts for the twenty twenty grants. So hopefully you will have all of everybody's information next week. And we can send those over to the community to kick out some checks. So, you know, we have some grantees that they may not be able to do with that money. You know, this report next year might be much more interesting to see what, what Alies does with their grant, for example, for our camp. But right now, we just don't know. And we really felt that they would need the cash one way or another. So we're, we're moving forward with making sure that those grants go up.
So this year, we're using, it's effectively the same application process as we've done in previous years where we're asking for them to specify particular programs. Yeah, because that's the way, there's always been a little bit of a mismatch between what we're asking for and what we kind of know they're being used for. They're not really, in some cases, they're not for special programs, they're for, for general operating costs. I know it's too late to do it this year, but I think at some point, we should put on our agenda actually reviewing, trying to match what we're asked, what we're asked, the hoops that we're asking them to jump through and what we really intend to work to be, the money to be used for.
Yeah, the last time there was a really solid review of this by the park supervisor, I think, was before I started here. And I think it was a pretty big process that Karen's to better define what was going on and also define the review procedure and process overall, just to give it more strength, I think. But I agree, it probably is time to take a look at it and maybe even reconsider. I think one of the ones that I always think is a little funny is Alieska's Eclipses. They haven't applied in a long time. They used to apply quite a bit.
You, you should be like every other year. I think they've been applying.
You might see a lot more people applying this year just because of revenues.
Yes, but this year, we still have to go under the old rules. I'm thinking it probably makes sense to look at these reports and think about how we may rationalize this process. And then as we go through this year, we can, we can, we're going through the old process and it might be a good, again, a good opportunity to think about how we can do this better or get better alignment between. Because we're often asking for people to, to sort of say, what specific extra programs are they going to do? When that's not really what the money is being used for and probably not the best use of the money. So we can try and rationalize that as we go through this process and then have a discussion in the fall about how to do it better. And then have those rules apply for next year.
Good.
Okay, there's public comment. Seeing no members of the public, I'm not going to read this out. There's actually, we could speak as GBOS members, I guess. So a public comment person's offering public comment, mistake their full name and address. Public comment is limited to three minutes per person and must be on subjects not listed on the agenda. Do any other, any of the attendees wish to be members of the public briefly?
Nope.
Hearing none?
I am, I am a member of the public. And I'm happy, I'm happy to be a member of the public.
How's tax preparation going?
No, that's all called off, but I, you know, I, I actually.
Until July.
I actually got a positive test, so I was in isolation for actually five weeks, so.
Now you're back to being a member of the public.
I'm, I'm back to being a member of the public. I have an official document from the state of Alaska stating I can leave my isolation.
Has your wife come home yet?
No.
Oh, man.
So you, you actually got a positive test, a test that came positive.
Yeah, I haven't told you, but I think these other people know. This is what's strange. I got a positive test fourteen days after my fever was gone.
Right, right.
So there was residual RNA, but once it happened, then the state got involved and then my doctor says, well, we don't know, so I want you to isolate till you have a negative test. So I had a negative test just Saturday, so.
Right. I know you were concerned that you had it.
So I'm very happy to be a public again.
Yes.
You know, it'd be nice if, if they said where those recoveries were at like they do for the positives.
Yes.
They don't show the breakdown of Gerwood's got three positives, but they don't show who recovered.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So, so you can do some shopping for me then, Jerry?
Yeah.
Now you're, now you're in that category.
I am actually going probably the next two days to English.
It's your business opportunity for you. Should drive for seven very. Anyway, sorry, we should, we should adjourn.
Yep.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second, all in favor?
Yeah. Thank you.
Mike, I have a question for you, Mike.
Yes.
I'll get off.
Thanks, Kyle.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good job.
Did Kaylee use your model to guess the?
Okay, I told her, I, I did all the numbers. We just, I had two different models or two different sets of assumptions for these. So the way it works is it uses a fairly simple logistic regression model, but it, because there aren't that many parameters and we haven't got that much data. Because it's only been running for a few years. So I have two different sets of assumptions about future weather. So what you do is it, it basically takes the state of the mountain over the last week of, of March, so the depth at fourteen hundred feet, which you can easily get, and the weather conditions are fourteen hundred feet. And then the, the rest of it is a projection for what will happen into April. And I found two different, two quite different sets of, I think one was the National Weather Service. I looked at their projection or their forecast for the next two weeks. And I think the other one was Weather Underground. I can't actually remember where I got it. But they gave two quite different projections and it's very sensitive to, you know, how much of the time the temperature is above and below freezing. So I put two different, I put the both sets of assumptions into the model and just to see what it would come out with. And then they, there were two different numbers that came out, a lower one and a higher one. And I don't have, the way I set the model up, it doesn't have a proper distribution around those. So I just, so I did a few things around both means. And one of my, I just arbitrarily said these half of mine and the other half for Kaylee's.
Oh.
So it was completely random as to who got the, but it, so one of the two models came out and it came out spot on. I mean, it's luck that it came out spot on. It's not luck that it was close, I think.
Yeah.
And the weather, the weather actually was closer to the, the actual weather was closer to the assumptions for that model, so. I'm actually happy about it. I think it'll be more accurate next year.
But you don't remember which one was more accurate, which?
I can't remember which it was. I believe it was Weather Underground. I got it in my notes. But I know, I looked at three different sites and two of them were similar and the third one was a bit different. So because it was different enough, I thought I'll put that in and just see how the models behaved. And we wanted two of those flexible cups, so we had enough tickets. Two models. But the trick, the trick is to submit them at the last possible moment because that's when you have the best forecast for that. Very, it's pretty sensitive to the, to the temperature, the temperature you see and the amount of rainfall you see over the two weeks or so until they do the measurement.
Yeah, it can change, can vary a lot depending on.
It can vary a lot. Yes, yeah. I did try, last year I tried to do something where I actually modeled the physics of, of snowmelt. And that wasn't successful. This time it was just a simple, simple logistic, logistic regression. It worked out better.
That's awesome.
Yeah, it's funny. I thought a bunch of people, because it was a round number, I thought there'd be quite a few winners, but it turned out just to be the one.
She was the only one?
Yeah, well, I was the only one, but.
I will, yeah.
I'm gonna claim all credit.
All right, well, tell her congrats and even that was.
Thank you.
All right.
Normally, she's the brains of most things, but in this particular case, it was me.
Well, have a good night, you two.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thanks, bye.
Bye.